Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June 15th, 2021 meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Weems if he would give him the occasion, please.
Yes, sir.
Please bow our heads in reflection and prayer. Dear Lord, we give thanks for all the good things you've given us. Want to take this opportunity to give blessings to all the health care workers, those on the front lines of COVID-19, as hopefully you are making a conclusion to that phenomenon. We ask that the proceedings today be given with the initiative of discernment, wisdom, and judgment, and we ask all these things in your name, Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve and submit it.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries five oh. Next is public service announcements. We don't have Dr. Polsky with us today. Things have slowed down on that front, so we didn't feel it was necessary to have him in every week. So if something happens, if there's a significant change, we'll get him in to talk about those changes. Otherwise, we appreciate Dr. Polsky coming in every Tuesday for those months that he did that, giving us updates. So we do appreciate his time and effort for that. The only other comment I have in the public service announcements is today we're going to dedicate the Prince Frederick Firehouse at 3:00 this afternoon, $11 million project that we hope that will serve the needs of the Prince Frederick fire department for many, many decades ahead. So looking forward to doing that today. So the first item under new business, Department of Public Works, Mr. Tom Jones.
Good morning. Morning, Commissioners, staff, and citizens of Calvert County. How's everyone doing today?
Wonderful.
Today, I'm here joined with Mike Highland, gentleman represented from SMECO. And today we will be reading the memo titled Southern Maryland Electric Cooperative Electric Vehicle Recharging Stations. The background, as electric vehicles are growing in popularity in Southern Maryland, so is the need for electric vehicle charging stations. Staff was contacted by Michael Highland, representative from Southern Maryland Electric Cooperative SMECO, to discuss SMECO EV recharge program, which was approved by the Maryland Public Service Commission. The EV recharge program intends to install up to 60 vehicle charging stations in an area served by SMECO, which include Calvert, Charles, Prince George's County, and St. Mary's County. Calvert County has the opportunity to receive up to 20 electric vehicle charging stations through this program. The EV recharge stations will serve the growing population of electric vehicle owners as they are transitioning away from gas-powered vehicles. Discussion. SMECO is proposing to provide broadband telecom BTC, power level two dual-port electric vehicle service equipment and level three DC fast charge stations. The level-two electric vehicle chargers will be located between two parking spaces to allow two electric vehicles to charge at once. Two small concrete pads will be installed, one for the meter disconnect cabinet and one for the charger, along with ballards for protection with painted spaces and EV charging-only signs. The level-three DC fast chargers are more robust and have a larger meter cabinet. These chargers can only accommodate one car at a time. It has been suggested that two parking spaces be used if possible. Staff has worked to identify locations that meet the criteria set forth by SMECO. The following proposed locations have been identified. Group A, which will consist of a level-two charger at the county annex building, Fairview Library, Southern Community Center, and Calvert Marine Museum. Group B, which consists of Solomon's Boardwalk near the gazebo, which would support a level three, Chesapeake Hills Golf Course, excuse me, level two, New County Services Plaza, which would be a level three, the new Harrier Brown Community Center, which would be a level two, and possibly a level three as well. There are future sites also being considered, such as Prince Frederick Park and Ride for level twos and additional sites along Solomon's Boardwalk of the street and other sites still to be determined. Physical impact, none. The installation of these charge stations will be incurred by SMECO. For the attached agreement, SMECO will own and maintain these recharge stations for five years. After five years, the agreement will be revisited. The customers will access the recharge stations through an app, which they will pay to use. This will result in no cost to the county. Conclusion, recommendations. Staff recommends the board approve the form of the agreement and authorize the board president to sign completed agreements as recommended by staff. And at this time, Mike actually has a presentation he'd like to share with you.
Morning.
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 Morning, Commissioners. My name is Michael Highland. I am with Southern Maryland Electric Cooperative, kind of a new employee. I started there during COVID, so it's been interesting working from my house. What you see on the screen right now is two pictures of actually two of our installations. The one on the left is over at the Charles County Health Department, and the one on the right is down at Port Tobacco at the community center. And you'll see that they look very similar. These are not painted, and they don't have their signs yet. We would like every installation to be exactly the same. So quickly, some background on it. We're calling our program EV recharge. I'll do a little overview of that, where the status is of electric vehicles and the infrastructure in Southern Maryland as a whole, and then the details of our program that I'm presenting to Calvert County. The overview, we will install, own, and operate the EV charging stations throughout Southern Maryland. We went to the Public Service Commission, and they approved up to 60. And of those 60, 20 of those can be what are called level-three fast chargers. In our budget that we had approved, we budgeted 50 level twos and 10 level threes, but we could adjust that and go all 60 level twos, or we could go 40/20 split, depending on how it all shakes out. One of the issues is the chargers must be installed on properly leased, owned, or occupied by a unit of state, county, municipal government, per the Public Service Commission order. So we cannot put these on private property. We've been contacted by a lot of folks, saying, "I'd love to have this in front of my store." That's just off the record. We can't do that. We'll be responsible for all costs. So that's installing it, the operation, maintenance, hosting it, all the data collection. This is a pilot program, so one of the biggest things that we can gather out of this is the use of these. I could look on a daily basis and see what chargers are being used, for how long, what is the energy being used, and the time of day, the length of the charges, and we can start to get some data analytics around electric vehicles in Southern Maryland. Users will pay for charging. This is not going to be a free service. This is going to be something where they pay, and we'll get to that in one second. Here's the current status of EVs in Southern Maryland, and I'm using the M database here. There's multiple databases, and they're slightly different, but as of May, we had about 32,000 electric vehicles in Maryland as a whole. Now, the state's goal is 300,000 by 2025. So you can see, we're a little over 10%. We really need to put this into a kicked-up gear if we're going to get there to 300,000. Looking at that data, I can calculate we have about 1,500 or so that are in our territory, and that's all four counties we serve. And if you look at Calvert County, it's about 385. And I use the word approximate. It could be 370, it could be 400, based on the NVA data. And a lot of that was screwed up a little bit due to COVID. Folks didn't have to actually register the vehicles at the time, or it was been slipped a little bit. So the data is going to start to catch up probably in the next six months. So what we want to do is we want to increase the transportation. We need more public charging. In the state of Maryland, to have 300,000 electric vehicles, estimates are you need about 9,200 electric vehicle chargers, and we are nowhere near that at all. We're proposing putting in these stations so the public can kind of lose that anxiety factor. I know folks that have cars say they can't believe it still is an issue, but it is. The number-one reason folks do not buy an electric vehicle in the United States is because of range anxiety. They're afraid they're going to be somewhere, and the charge is not going to be in the battery to get home, and there's no chargers around. And by putting chargers out in the public space, libraries, community centers, aquatic centers, whatever it may be, ball fields, they'll start to see these chargers are everywhere they go, which then will maybe spur them into that last decision of, "I want to buy an electric vehicle." That and the fact that the Ford F-150 Lightning is coming out in January may be another reason for the electric vehicle. Here's what I pulled off of the PlugShare app, which is a public app, and it shows that we have chargers. There's no doubt we have a few chargers in the county, but that's nowhere going to handle the 385 cars now, and ultimately, it's going to go up to about 18,000 in the SMECO territory. So what we would like to do is add more to that map right there. And our targets have some issues. One is obviously the ownership of the property, but the other is it has to be open 24/7. So if there's going to be a gate that closes at dusk, say, we look at Howling Point Park, we look at the Aquatic Center, and Tom and I have discussed all these locations, and we're going to continue to discuss them, but once there's a gate, we can't put a charger there. And although it may be a dynamite location, we either have to make the decision to not close that gate because there's an electric vehicle charger there, and other counties are doing that, or we are proposing to go to the Public Service Commission with our data that I'm starting to gather and say, "Hey, no one's charging in the middle of the night anyway, so let's put them there." We'll see. Green Lots is our subcontractor. When we talk about the five-year agreement, we have a five-year agreement with Green Lots. Green Lots is a Shell Oil subsidiary, and they are getting into the EV space. So we've contracted with them, and they do all the installation, hardware, software, the data analytics, the maintenance, the support throughout the five-year agreement we have with them. They use subcontractors to actually do the installations. So we use about four or five electrical subcontractors right now that actually are working for Green Lots. We take 5% of the program that we had budgeted, and that's for education and outreach. We branded the EV recharge program, we're doing flyers, we're doing posters, any site that has a charger in front of it, like a library, say, that I put that in. Leonard Town was our first one. I give them a bunch of flyers, so that way, when someone comes in and says, "Hey, I see an opening charger," bam, we can hand them some information on charging. This is what it costs, this is the amount of time it'll take you, this is where you can go buy a vehicle. We'd like to do some education on ride and drives, maybe at, you know, a Weingartner, you know, another Chevrolet dealer, whatever, who's selling electric vehicles. We haven't done anything through the pandemic, but we're about ready to get to a point where we think we can do that and do a ride and drive, whether it's at a county fair, or maybe it's a school, do some more outreach to educate the folks on what EVs can do for them. Already mentioned most of the criteria, so I won't spend a lot of time on it, but we do have this discussion of level-two versus level-three. Level-three is known as a DC fast charger. And the reason being, and that's what you'll see, the Tesla chargers are that way, you can pull up your car, you charge in maybe 15 minutes to 45 minutes, you get a full charge, you go. A level-two charger is not going to be that quick. It's going to take you twice the amount of time or more to charge your vehicle, but the cost difference between putting in a level-two and a level-three is enormous, and also, we need the installation equipment there. So we're looking at easy locations for us to put in a charger. When I went around with Tom and looked at all the locations, if I have a transformer sitting there, and it's in front of the Southern Community Center, say, and I can put in a charger pretty quickly, that's a high-ranked location for us. If I'm dealing with the Department of Natural Resources, and they have a trailhead, and it's three miles from any of our equipment, and they only get 15 people there on a weekend, that's a very low priority for us. So we're looking at volume, we're looking at what we have for infrastructure.
Sir, let me ask you a question. Because with people's time, it's everything, right? So to find somebody that's going to sit someplace for an hour or so, you know, that's real rare. Can they do a partial charge? So somebody sees one of your stations and says, "You know what? I'm a little nervous. Do I have enough to get their plug-in for 15, 20 minutes and get any value out of that at all?"
Yes, sir. Commissioner Art, that's exactly what we see, and I'll share some data with Tom, and he can send it forward to you guys. That's why we were looking at the community centers. We're looking at the multi-gen center over in Charles that we put one in. We're putting the libraries. The Board of Education down in St. Mary's is getting a lot of play. Right now, we have eight chargers that are commissioned and are charging vehicles. I'm starting to collect the data. I have another five under construction in Charles and St. Mary's. And when we put it at a ball field, we're not sure of the data right now, because a lot of the ball fields have been closed all spring due to COVID. I would like to see it when, say, football starts to come back in, and folks are going to watch their son or daughter cheer or play, and they're there for three hours.
Sure.
Well, there you can pick up 50% charge on it, and if you're already at 50, now you're back to 100, and you feel comfortable for the rest of the day.
Because also, too, if you've got three cars in a parking lot, and you see a guy hooked up there, you're going to have to move on, because it's not like a gas pump. You see people at gas stations get antsy, and it takes less than a couple minutes, so that's, you know...
And that's what I address on this slide, Commissioners, is we don't have the ability... We can put signage in place, but we don't have the ability to enforce parking, right? We're a utility. Now, for the eighth straight year at the State House, a bill has been put forward to create a state law for EV charging parking enforcement, because right now, even if you call the sheriff's office, or your county, whatever you may have, they have no authority to ticket that car for being in there. Let's say, you know, a pickup truck that's an internal combustion engine pickup truck parks there and refuses to leave. Well, there's no authority, and that's something we'd have to deal with. I know when Tom and I were chatting about the boardwalk, you know, you know how crazy it can get down in Solomon's on some weekends? You may just have to realize that there's going to be times where an internal combustion engine vehicle is going to be in that spot, and there's nothing you can do. But that shouldn't eliminate the other 99% of the time that an electric vehicle can get down there and charge. But it is an issue, it's ongoing.
You can't put a sign up that says "electric vehicle," no?
We will.
Yeah.
We actually have, and I wish I would have grabbed a better picture for you, Commissioner, because we actually have that, and it says parking only while charging. And the red and white is the choice we went with, and then we paint the spaces with an electric vehicle charging symbol on them. But we know, as we come out of COVID, one of the areas is a community center, the clubhouse over in Charles, and we're concerned. We have a big tournament over there, right? And they are DC fast charger, we're going to put over there, level three. Will somebody park in there? Will somebody get mad? But we're the utility, and we really can't get in that space. We can only hope that sooner or later, there's going to either be federal, state laws on parking with enforcement.
How do people pay? With a credit card on it, or...?
I can get to that, but let's just jump on to it, Commissioner. Right now, we use what's called the Green Lots app, and Green Lots is our contractor. Anybody who you know has an electric vehicle, I guarantee they have the PlugShare app on their phone, and they probably have multiple apps on their phone, because that's typically how you pay in the electric vehicle world, and Green Lots is no different. You can pull up to the vehicle, I do it all the time when I commission, I pull up the Green Lots app, and when I put that in my car, the actual arm from the charger, I recognize it on my phone, I can begin charging, I can end charging, I can go for a walk. Like over in Laurel Springs, there's a walk, and we see that people are parking, charging, and then they're going for a walk. You can stop that charge during your walk two miles away. You could go to dinner in downtown Prince Frederick and say, "Hey, my car's charged." It'll tell me it's charged, and I can stop the charging. So it's pretty cool, and then it automatically bills you. If it's not working for some reason, there's a telephone number right on every one of our chargers that goes right to Green Lots, and they can do what's called a remote charge, and they can start it for you. And we test that when I commission it, and then periodically, we'll be going out and testing it. So it's pretty easy. It's amazing. This is the rate. Now, the rate is for level-two, it's 18 cents a kilowatt-hour, and for DC fast charging is 34. You probably are not going to be surprised, but that is the same rate for all chargers in the state that are owned by the utilities. This is the rate for BG&E, Pepco, PHI Holdings, Delmarva, and SMECO. All of them are the same, okay? And we have not... One of the questions we get from the counties all the time is, "Hey, we're thinking about doing our fleet." We don't have a fleet rate yet. It is something that we're discussing with the state level, but we're not there yet. So the data capture, one of the things I've mentioned multiple times, and I'll say it again, there's the PlugShare app, it kind of tells you about it, but we will be getting information from the app, and I can get to it 24/7, 365. So if someone complains that, "Hey, I tried to charge here, and I couldn't," which you've already had one or two of those, we can immediately find out what the issue was. Sometimes, it's the person's phone. We have found that, that they don't have a good connection, because maybe they're on AT&amp;T, and they're going to sinkhole down, say, at a ball field that they just can't get, and maybe Verizon works better there. We have seen that. Complaint process, they go directly to Green Lots. But as you know, they really come to SMECO, and I've been getting... We've only had one or two, and they've been both about charging. Other than that, it's been a lot of kudos for us. It's a lot of pictures saying, "Hey, it's about time, this is great." We're getting a lot of thank you for doing this, and then they're asking us things about location. "Hey, when are you going to put one here? When are you going to put one there?" And I say, "That's out of my hands." A lot of times, it's us with the county, we're working in partnership. So we actually have our own meter on each of the installations, because we're learning. This is a pilot program. We want to know exactly what these things use, and we're going to match up what the Green Lots is telling us versus what we see for electric usage, so we can get an understanding of what the parasitic load is, say, of that kiosk being on there all the time, or, say, a heater on our DC fast charging units in the winter, so they work properly, they're going to have a little heater in there, right? So we want to make sure we understand exactly what the cost is of using one of these EV chargers. And with that, I'll stop there and entertain any questions you may have. Thank you.
So I got John Norris's email about a bill being passed where any new construction of townhouses or apartments are going to require the builder to make it an option or something. Are you familiar with that?
I'm not that familiar with it, but we didn't go as far in this state as we did California. California is mandatory. Over here, it's an option to put in a level-two charger in new construction, especially at residential level, because what we're seeing of those 385 cars in the county, I would say the majority of them, the first thing they did is contacted an electrician and put a level-two charger in their driveway or in their parking area, and that is equivalent to putting in a 240-volt circuit for, say, your clothes dryer. That's really what you're adding, and then you're buying a charger. We plan, hopefully in the next 12 months, Commissioner, to have an EV residential rebate program, where we'll be able to buy that cost down. So let's say it cost you $1,000, and just throwing that number out there, for maybe changing your panel out, running that, buying the level-two charger, we may be able to give you, say, $300 to buy that down as an incentive.
So currently, you're only working on government-owned properties, correct?
Yes, sir.
But at some point, you've got to go beyond government-owned properties.
Well, Commissioner, that's a debatable question, and I'm not sure everyone agrees with that, mainly because there are many that don't want us in this space in the first place, because regardless of who puts in the charger, we are most likely selling them the electronics. So whether it's a Tesla, it's a SEMA Connect, it's an EV GO, you can go through all the names of them that are being put out there. They're connecting to SMECO's when they're in our territory. So this was to really help the state reach this 300,000 goal. There's a really good chance, in my opinion, that this will be it, will be capped, because every time we bring this up, some of the private charging companies say, "Hey, wait a second. You know, let ChargePoint put them in, let us put them in, this is our space." And we're seeing that. I think we're seeing a whole lot of new charging infrastructure coming around. You know, if you look at the Wawa's and the way they signed the agreement with the Teslas, and now they have the superchargers coming in, running the county property across the street, we have a SEMA, I think it's a SEMA Connect across the street that's put in there. That is all done by private companies that are getting into this space.
Yeah, because, you know, when you think about our priorities, and you take out the parks and rec, it's not a lot of locations for the kind of demand you're talking about and the number of stations you're going to have to put in, so... But there's private companies out doing it, and they can make agreements with private operators, because the first thing I thought of was a movie theater. If you're going to a movie, you're going to be there for an hour and a half. If you're at a shopping center, you're going to be there for a while, restaurants, so...
And I think that's the business decision that they're going to make. I mean, I would love to get in. We've talked about it, I would love to get into... My kids are all grown up, but, you know, I spent many of hours at Howling Point Park and Dunkirk Park, and, you know, you're there for hours upon hours at tournaments, and if I had an electric vehicle, I would probably charge there.
And not many people are going to go there after the park closes just to charge their car, because it's going to be dark, and they're going to hang around for an hour.
Exactly.
If they are, they're up to something else.
And as I mentioned, my data is showing that. I really want to hit that strongly to the Commission, that I'm not seeing somebody pull into an EV charger at midnight, it's just not happening. They're charging... 90% of all charging will happen at home and at your workplace. These chargers are not about the end-all for electric vehicle charging. All the car friends that I have, especially the Tesla drivers, they're charging at home. That's where you charge.
Sir, is there a projection, you know, I know what the state hopes, but you see with the car manufacturers, obviously, that's where it's going. I mean, when you see Mustang is making one, I mean, you know, I mean, you expect some of the other, you know, higher-end Volvos and all that stuff to go that way. Is there a projection what they think this country, say, 10, 15 years from now, percentage will be electric?
Well, we're only at a couple percent now, at tops. That's the thing, if we go out to 20, 30 even, you're still talking under 10% of vehicles.
Because I'd say in this county, would it's safe to say we've got 33,000 homes? I mean, would it shock anybody if we had 150,000 cars in Calvert County? I mean, I don't know what the number is, but I mean, you know, that's just, you know, homes, you know, that's not rentals, you know, but, you know, and then to only have a handful of stations.
And that's the key. I really believe it. The other issue is going to be, how do we address multi-unit dwellings where the resale of electric vehicles go in the areas where you don't have your own driveway, right, or your own garage? How are you going to charge at home? If 90% of charging is at home, and your home is, you're up there, and your parking spot is over there, it's going to create an issue. That's what these chargers are going to come in for, is if we lead by putting in, say, 20, we talked about having 20 in this county, and then the private industry gets excited too, and then maybe we start going into the government itself, putting them in through fleets, you can just see the number of electric vehicles can start to be accommodated. But numbers-wise, I've been waiting for the common man, I always say it, to... I'd love the electric vehicle, I don't have one, but I drive a Dodge Ram. Don't hold it against me, anybody here, but...
No commercials allowed.
Well, I thought about trading it in next year and getting that Ford F-150. I mean, once they announce that the F-150 is coming out, and it is going to be the same price as a Ford F-150 non-electric, and it has a range of 250 miles, I don't drive 250 in a day.
But I think that's the anxiety, though, like, say, is range, also, who can work on it? You know, if you start kicking the tires with some of these companies that are offering, a lot of them don't even have the materials, you know, to, if something breaks, to fix it. Well, the cost of the batteries, I've heard, is crazy. Yeah, and so, I mean...
But you don't have to change your batteries, really, more or less probably the life of your vehicle, you'll probably then resell it. As for the maintenance, there's going to be trade-offs. For instance, you imagine never having to change your oil again?
Well, I think that's why you see...
Jiffy lubes now go like that.
They're not.
Well, let's face it, corporate America's goal is to eliminate labor, right? What's your highest cost of running any business is labor, so you just said it, if you're not replacing belts and spark plugs and oil and all that kind of stuff, I mean, obviously, they'll get you somewhere. I mean, the cost of the battery will be $10,000. I mean, they're not going to do anything that hurts themselves financially, but I don't know that they've caught up material-wise to meet the demand that you're seeing. I mean, like, say, if that truck is same-line price as the other, somebody looking at it going, "Well, shoot, it's the same price, and I don't have to pay for oil changes and gas and all, why wouldn't I do that?"
They actually had a release on YouTube two weeks ago, and I guess Ford had more orders for that vehicle than they've had of any car they've ever released on social media.
Sure.
Trust President.
Yes, sir. Tim?
Sir, with regards to, back to the issue of focusing on the locations and the usage and all, 60% of the workforce drives out of Calvert County each day, so I'm sure likewise with St. Mary's and Charles. Are you working and interfacing with the economic development elements of those counties to try to figure out where the new economic development is going to be located, and then you could co-locate additional charging stations if you get the legislation? And that way, you cover some of the major routes, such as 210, Maryland 5, Maryland 24, all feeding into the metropolitan area, which, again, if gasoline prices change or a crisis happens, then that changes the whole dynamic of the electronic vehicle.
Yeah, I agree. We are looking at the corridors. I mean, we can't put it... Economic development typically means private infusion of money, whether it's a new shopping whether it's a new shopping mall or whatever. We can't put our chargers there, right? So we are limited on dealing with our county partners here, and that's where we're looking to you all for help.
I understand. But, but looking down the road, if you're looking at legislation to further develop this concept, you're going to have to look at the General Assembly, and then when you take something to the General Assembly, look at what you're asking for and where you're going, why it's an effective means to place along these routes of ingress and egress into the Washington metropolitan area in particular.
Yes, I agree. We will have to do that. And I think we're doing it on a smaller scale, Commissioner. When Tom and I looked at our spots, one of the first ones that came to our thought was, let's go further north towards Dunkirk, towards the end of our service territory. And we looked at the Fairview Library, saying, I could hit that right on Route 4. And then let's really look at some spots in Prince Frederick, right off of Route 4. And then we looked, let's go down south, and we were thinking the boardwalk being the end of Route 4, and that's where the Southern Community Center came up. And we're doing very similar on the other side of the river. We're looking at Route 5, we're looking at Highway of any of the areas. And also town centers, right? We wanted to know where somebody has something to do. If you just have a vehicle charger in the middle of nowhere, we're finding, the data that we see is charger, the drivers themselves are telling us they're not stopping there. They want to go and get out and go have that bite to eat. They want to go into the library. They want to go where they can spend 45 minutes to an hour doing something other than sitting in their car.
But if you can get 250 miles out of a charge, the average daily commuter that's going to DC or Baltimore to work can drive to work, drive home, run a few errands, and still be within 250 miles. So it's, it's mainly travel. You know, if I'm on vacation, or if I'm on the road service guide, then I may rack up a few more miles. But generally, the daily commutes for workers shouldn't be an issue.
I agree, Commissioner, and that...
It's not all about mileage, though. It's about time, because electronic vehicles are running off of time. So the time in the heavy commute areas and heavy traffic areas makes and changes the dynamic of it. The other point of this thing is, with regards to the legislation at state level, the counties will need to step in and try to help reinforce that issue. And so to work the counties in this particular case, the Southern Maryland counties, or work through Mako on a larger scale for Maryland, those things are going to be critical and further in this initiative.
Well, I think the manufacturers down the road will probably put multiple batteries in vehicles, so when one goes dead, it switches over to the second one, kind of thing.
Well, it already is a rack.
Alternator situation to get there. Once you get a proper alternator, you know, because they're going to, they're going to understand that, too. I mean, that, you see it on boats, right, that go along, where they've replaced generators with multiple batteries, but alternators to where they know you're going to get to a place where you can charge up at that marina, but you may have to go 200, 300 nautical miles running off that, you know, so, you know, to run your electrical systems and stuff. So I'm sure the alternator thing will catch up.
Commissioners.
Mark Wallace, County Administrator. I think what we are already looking at is economic development and planning and zoning are already, you know, having these basic conversations, and that's going to be the future as far as county government goes. How do we work within our own departments to put that out to the, to the economic side of the House and the residential side of the House as we go forward? So we are taking a look at that.
So are there any issues? Fire departments need training to be able to deal with one of these charging stations if there happened to be an issue?
Not, not that we know of. As I, as I mentioned, these level twos that we're putting in is similar to a circuit to feed your clothes dryer at home. It is a 240 volt, 30 amp circuit, and you cannot even, when you plug into the car, your car is disabled. You can't pull your car away. Like, you can in a regular gas station, you ever see when someone pulls out in the actual? You can't do that electric vehicle. Electric vehicles are made with safety protocols in them, it just disables the vehicle. It isn't until you pull it out that you can actually start that vehicle.
Yeah, but if I had an issue at my house, I go to the fuse panel and I kick the circuit.
We have the, we have breakers actually on, inside the BTC units that we're using, and then we also have breakers inside the meter cabinet that we have, and then we have the ability inside our transformers. So we have multiple layers of reliability and fusing.
Just want to make sure those guys don't get hurt.
I agree.
So we have any other questions?
Sir, I do have a follow-up on that, just from the fire department, and this is the only reason I know about it, is with the advent of increased solar panels on, on housing, the fire department certainly has had to go back and get additional training on that. They're looking at the same thing for these cars on scene. So while we may not see it out there, they're definitely, they're thinking about it. And just so that we let the public know, Calvert County has about 3.2 vehicles per household on average, that may be going up and down. We have a little over 98,000 registered vehicles in the county, which kind of matches that for the number of residences that we have. So I don't want anybody to think that we have 150, 180,000.
I was taking a shot, yeah. I didn't know, no clue.
Oh, I didn't attribute that to you, Commissioner, but I just...
Don't worry, only Mike Hardin thinks that, don't worry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure if there are issues, they know, because when electric cars first came out, you know, they rolled up on the scene, they weren't looking for electric cars, and people got hurt. So we just want to make sure they're prepared for what they might come up on.
Thank you.
So we have an agreement that we're going to formalize today?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the form of agreement with Smecco with the addition of a provision that chargers be removed by Smecco at the end of the agreement and authorize the Board President to sign completed agreements as recommended by staff.
Second?
So I have a motion and a second, that we approve the agreement with Smecco with the addition of the provision for the chargers to be removed if needed at the end of the agreement. Any discussion on that motion? Yes, sir.
That provision of removal is contingent upon a renegotiation of program.
Correct. Correct. Only if for some reason we...
I don't know.
Yes, only if we figured out that that wasn't a good location for a charger, you know, that was the only reason.
Exactly.
Would they add that in there? So, yes, that's our understanding, Commissioner. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Next item on the agenda is Department of Public Works, JR Cosgrove. Oh, it's okay. I just read what they give me.
All right, good morning, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Okay, for Budget Adjustment Number 379. Background: The Highway Maintenance Division receives numerous customer service requests, which we call CSR tickets, along with their daily task of maintaining the county roads. Highway maintenance has anywhere from 200 to 500 CSR tickets, depending on the time of the year and the weather. Currently, we got 487 on hand. Discussion: CSR tickets range from tree trimming, culvert replacement, shoulder reclamation. Some CSR tickets require specialized equipment such as trench compactors, asphalt rollers, and equipment to load material. This budget adjustment proposes to transfer a surplus of funds from the Highway Maintenance Gasoline Account 25220291 to Highway Maintenance Off-Road Equipment Account of 23231201. This will allow the purchase of needed equipment to better address the CSR tickets. Fiscal impact? There is no fiscal impact to the county. The surplus funding identified in the Highway Maintenance Gasoline Account was pre-approved through previous budget processes. Conclusion and recommendation: Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve Budget Adjustment Number 379 to transfer $129,000 from Highway Maintenance Gasoline Count 25220291 to Highway Maintenance Off-Road Equipment Account 25231201.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt Budget Adjustment 379.
Second? Have a motion and a second, that we approve and adopt the Budget Adjustment Three, Number 379. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Next item in New Business Three is Pump and Hall Sewage and Gray Water. Beth Richmond.
Good morning, Commissioners. Beth Richmond, Deputy Director of Finance and Budgets. The subject is ITB 2021055, which is to pump and hall sewage and gray water. This is award recommendation. The background: The purpose of this contract is to establish a unit-price term contract to provide all labor, materials, equipment, and supervision necessary to pump and hall sewage and gray water from recreation vehicles located at the Breezy Point Campground in Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Discussion: During the weeks of March 9, 2021, and March 16, 2021, advertisements appeared in two local newspapers, the E. Maryland Marketplace Advantage website, and the county's Facebook page soliciting bids for the reference contract. Two bids were received in opening during a vir, excuse me, a virtual bid opening on April 1, 2021. The lowest apparent bidder, Wayne's Drains and Septic Services LLC's bid, did not meet the minimum requirements for a company providing the requested services for at least three years. Therefore, Wayne's Drain and Septic Services LLC's submittal should be considered non-responsive and there, and should be rejected. The second-lowest bidder, Magnolia Plumbing, Inc., meets all requirements of the specifications. In addition, reference checks provided satisfactory comments. The bid tabulation and comparison from the bid opening are attached, attachments being seen. Fiscal impact: Funding for this contract has been allocated in the Breezy Point Park Contracted Service Account, which is 799-27515. The conclusion and recommendation: In accordance with Section 6-101 of the Code of Public Laws, it is recommended the Board of County Commissioners reject Wayne's Drains and Septic Services LLC and adopt staff's recommended findings in Attachment A and award the unit-priced contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Magnolia Plumbing, Inc., 13400, Mid-Atlantic Boulevard, Laurel, Maryland.
Questions? Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we reject the bid of Wayne's Drains and Septic Services LLC as non-responsive.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Adopt staff's recommended findings in Attachment A and award the unit-priced contract to Magnolia Plumbing Incorporated.
Second?
Have a motion and a second, that we reject the bid of Wayne's Drains and Septic Services LLC as non-responsive. Adopt staff's recommended findings in Attachment A and award the unit-priced contract to Magnolia Plumbing Incorporated. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I would just want to say, in the future, we ought to look at this three-year requirement, because we keep, you know, awarding contracts at a lot higher pricing than what we could get them at with that three-year requirement. So I would suggest that the Board start looking at that and maybe reducing that down some maybe to a year or two or something like that, and it may, in the future, may save the county a lot of money.
Is there a reason why we do three years?
I am not aware of that. Is Amanda Odell on the line?
I am on the line.
Usually, the requirements for the years are, come from the departments. They just want to make sure that each vendor or contractor that we are hiring has an established experience in the field that they are requiring, but it can be adjusted depending on the end users' requirements and needs.
Yeah, because a lot of guys have the experience and worked for that, in that industry their whole lives, but may have just started their business a year or two ago. So it really hurts this small guy trying to get a start, you know, that can't prove that he's done work for another county or something like that, so. But I just noticed that, you know, a lot of times, we're not awarding the bids to a lower bid because of that, and I think in the long run, it's costing the county taxpayers a lot of additional money, that's all.
Absolutely, it is definitely something we can look into. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Next item under New Business, item number four, Department of Economic Development, Director Schlegel.
Good morning, hi, the Commissioners. Kelly Robertson-Schlegel, Director of Economic Development. I'm going to go ahead and read the memo. Background: The Small Business Development Center is a nationwide initiative of the Small Business Administration, funded and supported in Maryland by the Department of Commerce and state and local organizations, including the Calvert County Board of County Commissioners. For those, for, excuse me, for some business owners, SBDC assistance is the only form of business advice they receive. Business counselors meet confidentially with existing business owners throughout the year in Calvert County at no charge to the client. All expenses for business management consulting are paid with federal, state, and local funds, allowing entrepreneurs to avail themselves to these unique services without assuming financial risk. In FY22, the quality of SBDC clients referred by the Department of Economic Development, coupled with the services provided by the dedicated Calvert County SBDC Counselor Lisa Creson, resulted in outstanding economic impact. Return on investment in FY21. In the first half of FY21, 129 clients were served, with more than 430 counseling hours provided and 183 training events held statewide, with 95 Calvert County residents attending. Discussion: By working closely with the SBDC, we are able to provide tremendous synergy between the SBDC, Calvert County businesses, and the department. Because the College of Southern Maryland is the host of the SBDC, we require a formal memorandum of understanding between the county and CSM to clearly delineate responsibilities and expectations. Both parties have reviewed and agreed to the terms, and the MOU will be effective from the date of signature through June 30, 2022. Fiscal impact: $38,900 is allocated in the FY22 Department of Economic Development budget. Recommendation: I recommend that the Board of County Commissioners authorize the President of the Board to sign the MOU.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners authorize the President of the Board to sign the MOU.
Second?
Have a motion and a second, to authorize the President to sign the MOU with the College of Southern Maryland. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Next item, number five, under New Business, Department of Planning and Zoning, Tamara Ward. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. Kelly Wallace, Planning and Zoning. I'll start off reading the memo. Metropolitan Planning Organization Letter of Support. Background: In 2013, Calvert County and St. Mary's County joined the NPO to coordinate regional transportation planning. The NPO area covers the St. Mary's and Southern Calvert Counties. The St. Mary's County NPO submitted an application for the Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration's Rebuilding American Infrastructure and Sustainability and Equity, known as the RACE Grant. This grant was formerly known as the Build Grant. This critical rural project aligns strongly with the primary selection criteria, providing significant safety, state-of-good repair, economic competitiveness, environmental sustainability, and quality of life benefits to the Southern Maryland region. Discussion: St. Mary's County has the fastest-growing workforce in the state of Maryland. In April 2019, Forbes articles stated that, quote, "California Lexington Park in Maryland emerged as the city with the highest share of high-tech jobs and its local economy in the country," end quote. The high level of science, technology, engineering, and math, known as the STEM program, jobs in the, in this region is driven by the presence of the Patuxent River Naval Air Station and various other Navy Department and Defense activities. These installations employ more than 20,000 active-duty civilian and contractors. Many of these employees rely on Maryland 5 to traverse the Great Mills Project area daily for work, school, daycare, and other local destinations. The Maryland 5 Great Mills Improvement Project will add two outside travel lanes, bicycle lanes, and sidewalks, as well as replace the bridge over the St. Mary's River between Maryland 246 and Maryland 2471. Currently, these routes experience long traffic queues during the peak travel period, creating congestion and safety concerns, with a crash rate significantly higher than the statewide average for similar routes. This project will be of great benefit to the whole Southern Maryland area. Fiscal impact is none, and the conclusion and recommendation is the attached is the Letter of Support for the St. Mary's County Maryland 5 Great Mills Improvement Project, and staff recommends that the Board read and sign the agreement to support the NPO project. Any questions?
Questions? Motions?
Mr. President, I make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners read and sign the agreement to support this NPO project.
Second?
Have a motion and a second, that we adopt and sign the letter of support as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the next item on the agenda is a presentation. Kelly?
Um, I think we will be, we're the County Commissioners, Kelly.
Hey, Kelly, we got a terrible echo.
I have an echo with that.
I don't know.
Okay. Um, we have, we have Murphy reporting us this morning, virtually from the Philosis Center, if you are live. I'll open up as well as a presentation. Thank you so much, Kelly. And Commissioners, it's good to see you, even though it's virtually, and I, I enjoy these times together. You know, we've just had our graduation ceremony, and it's a time when we think about just the power of earning that degree and what it means. We're really proud of the work we do in Southern Maryland, and honestly, when you think about it, 90% of our graduates stay in Southern Maryland. They live here, they work here, and I know that I've come to you before and talked about our economic impact, and this is a time that we really reflect on it, because we know that our graduates' earning potential increases between 111 and 149% within three years of earning potential increases between 111 and 149% within three years of graduation. We also know that the people who graduate from our college are the leaders in Southern Maryland, and they're really important in the ROI, the return on your investment of tax dollars, is, is fivefold. It's, it's pretty powerful. So what we put together today is a, a slide deck that shows you some of the folks who have passed through our hallways. And I think in the season of celebrating commencement, it's a good time to take a look at who we've touched and who is still part of our very vibrant community. So Kelly, you've got the, somebody has the slides. There we go. So this is our alumni. Next slide. Okay. If you take a look at that, our first graduating class was actually in 1961, but Danny Mayer was in the early one in 62. Look at those folks. Matt Middleton, class of 66. I actually have found an old photograph of Matt. He was on our baseball team. I've got him in a, I'm sorry, in our basketball team. I've got him in a basketball jersey. Next slide. We're, we're really proud of this. And there's our own Commissioner Hutchins right there, class of 75. And he, he was joined with some pretty wonderful folks. Greg Copperham was the year before him. Jay Lilly was in his class. Linda Cox, who is still a very good friend of college and, and was somebody who really helped us with our childcare initiatives early on and still very actively engaged with our foundation. Next slide. This, this is, this is pretty astonishing. I think we, it's interesting that you started off your, your meeting today talking about electric cars. And there's Joe Slater. He, he is absolutely cheering you from his retirement home in West Virginia right now, because you know that absolutely is his passion. And he too got his start at the College of Southern Maryland. Eleanor Alvey, class of 81, is really a wonderful, wonderful alum. She has done some really powerful work in helping some of our single mothers get through their careers. Thomasina Coats, one of your fellow commissioners from Charles County, came through our doors as well. Fire Chief George Kennett. We, you know, we talk about the COVID recovery, we talk about everything that we have done, but it's interesting to me just how many first responders have come through the hallways of the College of Southern Maryland. Next slide. All right. Look at that. Talk about public service. We've got Kelly Slagel right there. She's introduced us, and she is still very engaged with our college, and we're so happy to have her on our foundation board. You know, Jeff Slagel, Chaney Enterprises. You know, we talk about the, some of the really high-demand occupations we have right now. Chaney Enterprises has been very, very instrumental in our transportation center, and we know that right now, CBL drivers are in high, high demand. Troy Berry, Sheriff Berry is, is a wonderful asset in our community. He too came through our doors, and he's been very good about coming to the college whenever we need him to talk to young men, young men of color in particular, and keep people on that path that's going to lead them to that economic success. All right. We, we see right here just some of the breadth of the folks that we do. We've got some, you know, three out of four of these folks right here are Calvert County folks. I'm really, really proud that Kristy Lombardi, who came to the College of Southern Maryland as an adult student, really found her home with us and has done very, very well. And now she's the COO, Vice President and COO of the Community Bank of Chesapeake. She serves right now on the college's Board of Trustees, and she, she really is a powerful influence for Calvert County and for our college. Thank you. Thank you. Again, look at this, public service. I think that this is, this is really pretty wonderful when you think about that, how important it is right now. And right there in the middle, Colin Robbins, Assistant Analyst with County, Calvert County Government. He came, he came right through our doors and right over to you. We're very proud of the work that they all do. Here you see a few folks from St. Mary's County. You see Elisa Cassis and Dr. Rebecca Bridget, County Administrator in St. Mary's County. Dr. Bridget's claim to fame is that she is the very first reverse transfer that we ever had. Many of our students will transfer to a baccalaureate degree, or to a baccalaureate institution without completing their associate degrees, and we have developed articulations with some of those institutions to transfer credit back to us so that we can award that degree. Dr. Bridget received her associate honors from the College of Southern Maryland after she left us. And indeed, even though she does have a doctorate, I can, I can attest that the only degree she has hanging up on the walls of her office is one from the College of Southern Maryland. Elisa Cassis, their, their Public Information Officer, was an adult student who came back to us, and, and she's doing just a great job. I, I think if you take a look, Calvert County Government Emergency Management Specialist, Cara Buckmaster. There again, if you look at that, we are so proud of her coming through our doors, and now she's working on a doctorate in public administration. Again, people who come through our college stay in our community and are active in public service. They really are. Next one, please. Okay, here we see Samantha Stracko is no stranger to anybody here, and she, again, is another person who's at the Community Bank of Chesapeake, Calvert County person. We have Joe Watson on the other end there from the Huntington Volunteer Fighters. In the middle, we have two people from the other counties. Mike Bellis is the Executive Director of the United Way of Charles County, but lives in St. Mary's County. And Karen Elder is a person who's on our foundation board, and she hails from St. Mary's County. She's also a very, very active person in our Alumni Association, which is just going gangbusters. They seem to have a really good time. Next slide. We're getting really close here. We're getting, we're getting up to where we are now. If you take a look here, we see, you know, Jill Valverde, class of 19, Bay Shore Pediatrics Medical Assistant. Again, these are the folks who have been first responders. These are people who are going into public service. These are people who are part and parcel of our community. Marcella Sims, I, I, I really am excited about her, because she's somebody who shows us the possibilities for non-traditional careers. She got her HVAC certification at, from us after high school, and she's one of the few building eng, female building engineers working in this region. Larissa Pfeifer is my Chief of Staff. And right now, she's working on a doctorate at Fair State University in Higher Education Administration. I am, I cannot tell you how proud she is. She walks around all the time with her CSM alumni button. And Kim Rosenfield, this, this is fun. Kim has come back to us. She had a bachelor's degree, and she is the Chair of our Foundation Board, and she decided that if she really was going to be advocating for this college, she needed to know what it was about. So she came back to us as an adult student. She went through our fast-track business management program, and she was able to receive her degree from us in this last graduation ceremony. So I think, I believe that's the last slide, correct? It is. So I just got to tell you, these folks are just a handful of the people who have come through our hallways, and I think it's really interesting for us to take a moment and reflect about, on the impact of the College of Southern Maryland and what it really means for our community, our region as a whole. So I thank you for your time, and I, I just ask you to join me in celebrating these wonderful, wonderful graduates.
Maureen, I just want to, I just want to make sure that Tim Hutchins was an honor roll student when he was there. I just didn't know if, you know, he, he, you know, comes across as being real smart. I just wanted to make sure he wasn't faking it when he was here, you know?
Well, I'd have to get his permission to go back and look at his records. But I think he's done okay. President of the county, I think he's done.
Good.
Commissioner Hutchins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to, you know, what CSM is ready for, and especially those here in the Southern Maryland region, whether they be a transition from high school, so their footsteps, academic degree, higher academic degree. The college offers the best education you can buy for the amount of money that, that it costs to go there. You can't beat it anywhere across the board, I don't think, except at a community college. The returning veterans that are coming back from different conflicts and trying to reintegrate into the community or preparing to get a higher education so they can progress higher in the ranks of the military service. Older students that didn't have the time or the opportunity after high school to go to college are coming back, and you see the older students there in these pictures, some of them, that have returned. And those returning from situations such as we've found here in COVID that need to retool for new skills to give them the better opportunity to compete in the post-COVID enterprises. So the college offers a tremendous amount of support to our citizens of this county and into the future. Congratulations as you mark the 60th year.
So, so Dr. Murphy, do you offhand know how many graduates you've had since the college opened in Calvert County? Yeah, you're, you're muted right now. Dr. Murphy, you have to unmute yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, that is, that's a number I don't know, and I do need to know that. So you've given me some homework here. So I, I will bring that back next time we meet, and I'll let you know.
I just thought it would be interesting. The college has been here for a long time, and as, as you mentioned, you know, it greatly improves our citizens' education and life, and just be interesting to know how many have graduated.
I, I will, I will find that out, yes. We've been here since 1958, and, you know, when I think of, you know, I hope there's nobody from other counties on here, but I honestly believe that our Prince Frederick Campus is our most beautiful one. I think it's just stunning. And when I think that it started out as a trailer down on Brooms Island Road, I think, my gosh, how far we have come. It's, it's astonishing.
Yeah, you started out at the old Calvert Christian School.
Yep.
So, so Dr. Murphy, a little change in subject. Do you plan to open this fall in normal circumstances?
I don't think, I don't think we're ever going to be where we were, you know, two years ago, but we are bringing things, our goal is to have things 50% or more on-site for the start of the fall semester. We're bringing things back gradually over the summer, but we've also learned that we've, there are some things that we can do through technology actually better than we did on-site. We're, I think that by the time we're in, at January, we will have that mix that will take us into perpetuity. We still have, I've got to tell you, to be, we're talking about COVID recovery, be quite honest with you, the lowest percentage of people who are vaccinated in our region are people who are college-age students, traditional college-age students, and I'm very concerned because the Delta variant affects them greatly. So we are going to be joining the President Biden's drive for vaccinating college students to see if we can get more students vaccinated. It, it's pretty frightening, and it's, young people often think that they're immortal and they're immune to this, and it's really hard to get many of them to take it seriously. So we, we're going to do the best we can to get as many of our students vaccinated as possible.
Well, I think Dr. Postkey would be more than happy to help you out with that goal. So, well, we appreciate your presentation today and look forward to working together in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, I checked the audio there. It's a constant echoing coming out of the, your location.
Yes, we noticed that. They're trying to get that straightened out.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is a public hearing?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Jennifer Moreland. I'm Director of Community Resources. I'll read the memo. Background: The Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, has received 20 million in federal funds under the American Rescue Plan Nonprofits Local Government Program to allocate to local governments for administering and distributing grant awards to local nonprofits. Funding decisions to local nonprofits have to be made by September 1st, 2021, and grant funds are only available for use by December 31st, 2021. Discussion: The Department of Community Resources plans to administer the grants to county nonprofit organizations that have experienced an adverse financial impact and have reimbursable expenses related to COVID-19 that have not already been offset by other COVID-19 relief. On April 1st, 2021, the Department of Community Resources submitted a plant for, plan for how funds would be distributed, drawing on lessons learned from the CARES relief grants administered last year. Fiscal impact: DHCD awarded the county $306,086 with up to 10% available for administrative expenses, which is outlined in Budget Adjustment BA 262. BA 262 has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the County Attorney's Office. Notice of the June 15th, 2021 public hearing was advertised in the Southern Maryland News and Southern Maryland Voice for two consecutive weeks prior to the hearing. Conclusion and Recommendation: The Department of Community Resources requests the Board of County Commissioners accept public comment, and upon concurrence with the proposed use of funds, close the record, approve BA 262, adopt the attached resolution, and sign the grant agreement with DHCD.
Thank you. Any public comment?
If there is anybody on the Zoom call, you may press star nine to provide your, well, to raise your hand. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number.
Caller 5584, please unmute yourself. We are ready for your comments.
Caller 5584, please press star six, unmute yourself, and identify yourself by your name and city. Identify whether you're speaking on behalf of a group or if you're speaking on behalf of yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Kyle Green. I live in Prince Frederick, Maryland. I am speaking on behalf of myself. I wanted to talk about how disappointed in our county officials I am in regards to where we are going with the Prince Frederick Master Plan. The amount of build-out is ridiculous. All I keep hearing is we need more commercial space, more housing, more roads. The one thing I do not see or hear is we want more of is environmental protection. In the latest draft of the Prince Frederick Master Plan, the environmental section says, and I quote, "work in progress." That is a joke. Before any building in progress was planned for, the environmental aspects should have been in place. We live in a unique area that requires serious environmental solutions and strategies. In closing, I will quote from a University of Maryland Institute for Ecological Economics paper from 2002. It's in regards to Calvert County controlling sprawl. I quote, "It is important to stress that environmental and management practices associated with development may be more important than the actual amount of build-out," end quote. The fact that 20 years later, our officials have put out a draft that states "work in progress" is concerning and shameful. It shows where the priorities of this build-out are. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this public hearing regarding the American Rescue Plan nonprofit grants? Please press star nine. At this time, you'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number.
There are no additional speakers.
I would like to request a motion to close the record, adopt the resolution approving Budget Adjustment 262, and authorize the President to sign the agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the record, adopt-
I'd like to make a motion to close the record, adopt the resolution approving Budget Adjustment 262, and authorize the President to sign the grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Second. Have a motion in the second that we close the record, adopt the resolution approving Budget Adjustment 262, and authorize the President to sign the grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
And the nonprofit portal for these applications will be open next Monday, June 21st, so just wanna put that out there for the public.
Yep. Thank you.
And that's coordinated with Communications as well?
Um, yes, yes, we got the Communications pieces out there. There's an FAQ on the website, so the information's out there for the nonprofits, but the application will open up on the 21st.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Commissioner Hans, Kelly Slagel has sent us an email with your question that Dr. Murphy sent her, that 28,891 students have graduated from the college since opening.
Very good.
So, thank you for that information, Kelly.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. I think we've already got it.
I believe TS can confirm. We are, we do have one person still on the line. If they'd like to make a comment, they can press star nine to raise your hand. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number.
There is one caller available to speak. But no one is raising their hand.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hutchins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, just one comment. We've received a letter from the League of Women Voters in regards to the issue of the HB 673, the police accountability and the replacement of LAOBR. Uh, it, it demonstrates that, that there are a lack of knowledge in general about what we're tasked with doing here. The General Assembly passed the package that repealed the existing law enforcement officer bill of rights and put this new mechanism in place. What we're narrowly focused with here is the creation of a police accountability board, and that's all. It does four things, and then subsequent to that board being established is the staffing of a administrative charging committee. From there on, we have nothing to do with it at all, uh, except to do the four things that are required, and that is to establish the membership, um, to then, uh, go forward with, uh, creating a budget and a staff, and appoint the Chair of the Accountability Board, and then establish procedures for record keeping. Uh, and that's it. And, and then the other subsequent piece is to put one member on the Administrative Charging Committee. The trial board, we have nothing to do with. That's already prescribed by the General Assembly. So I, I think that we have got to do and field a plan, and so far, Mr. President, I've seen no plan as to what we are gonna put out there for, for the public. So, uh, county administrator and, and staff need to create and narrow down what's gonna be put out there so they can understand that it's, it's not just a whole revisiting of this entire General Assembly initiative and the seven other bills that went with it. So that, that would be my focus, Mr. President. That's all.
And I think there's, you know, we understand there's gonna be a lot of education and outreach needs to occur. People have different expectations and thoughts about what's gonna happen, and you're correct.
Absolutely. We, we have to frame it.
Right.
And the context of what we're charged with doing.
Right.
Or else it'd be all over the map.
Right.
And the more time we lose, the less time we have available for training and public education by the board itself, which are all in public meetings.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Um, myself and Commissioner Williams attended the Flag Day Ceremony yesterday, and I wanna thank Cal Stewart for always getting everybody organized together for that. He, um, always does a fantastic job with that. It was a nice ceremony, and that's about it.
Thank you. Commissioner McConkey?
No, I just wanna say that I'm looking forward to the ribbon cutting of Company Two this afternoon. It's good to be a part of, you know, approving everything and, and getting that project done, and it's, it's gonna be a great asset to the community.
Absolutely. Thank you. Commissioner Reams?
I had the pleasure and honor of representing the board on Sunday. Senator Bernie Fowler's weighed in, and, uh, it was well-attended considering COVID. It was a, a great event. Good to see him. Paragon of, uh, community.
So how far did you get?
I got my socks off.
What?
And then I stayed on the shore. Yes, sir.
How far did he get before he saw his?
He, um, he had waders on that, this year, and, uh, it looked like he went out, hmm, 15 feet, 10, about that. Yeah, about that. That's about the range.
Good.
Yes.
No.
It's good to see the man.
Yes, sir.
Good man.
Is that all?
That's all I have, sir.
All right. The only thing I have is, uh, last week, on Tuesday, Mr. Bob R. Scott's wife passed away. Mr. R. Scott is, uh, Chair of the Liquor Board for Calvert County, and they're very active in the community, so we wanna pass along our sympathies and prayers to Mr. R. Scott. And, uh, just a reminder again, we're gonna dedicate the Prince Frederick Firehouse this afternoon at 3:00. I think the fire department's planning a, a public open house sometime in the near future so everybody can go in and get a tour. It's, it's quite a facility, so, uh, you should take that opportunity when presented.
And it's gonna be interesting because this will be the only firehouse, I believe, that the doors open like this. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's got the new fault-bivouled doors.
Yeah.
They're two seconds faster than the other kind of doors.
Well, that, and they're safer too, 'cause, you know, doors can come slamming down and that type of thing, so I'm interested in seeing that.
Yeah. It's a nice facility, a very nice facility, so, uh... Other than that, the Chair would now take a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article subsection 3-305B1I, to discuss personnel matters of employees over whom it has jurisdiction, subsection 3-305B7, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice, and subsection 3-305B8, to consult about pending or potential litigation.
Second.
Have motion in the second that the Board of County Commissioners move into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.